It is 6:31 PM in Reed Field, Maine.
Please stand and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Welcome to everyone who is here and joining us online. As I always like to do, I want to remind all of our members to please clearly into the microphone. We have had some folks at home say how much they appreciate being able to hear us loudly and clearly as we do these recordings. We are scheduled to look at item number 22122, the minutes from the Select Board, minutes of March 28th and April 11th. Are there, I know there were submitted revisions, but did anyone else have any questions about those minutes?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as amended for March 28th and April 11th. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. We come to the warrant review of item 22123, warrants 42 through 47, and I believe it's Sean Keegan, ladies and gentlemen.
It is me. I'm going to do 42, 43, and then I'll do 44, 45, and then 46, 47.
I love this.
Just to make sure that is clear for everybody.
So in numerical order.
That would be correct. So for warrants 42 and 43, and the amount of $383,537.67. Keynotes were really RSU 38 for $288,602. We finished with Main Development for $1497. We had a payment to Infinity Lightning for finishing up those installs. Then we had the white signs, and that was the updated to the signs on the various roads that we talked about. I think that was our March meeting from our local member of public for 1635. And then we had payment to Cushing for $32,000.
I will make a motion to approve that warrant as presented.
I second, sorry.
It's all right. It has been moved and seconded to approve warrants 42 and 43 and the amount of $383,537.67. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much for that review, Sean. Would you like to do it again?
Sure. So warrant 44 and 45 for a total of $57,960. This encapsulated our state fees, and we had one payment that to pre-flarity for, I'm reviewing of our warrants and such. And that is all I had of note on those two.
I will make a motion to approve the warrant as presented.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve warrants 45 and 46 in the amount of
44 and 45.
Excuse me, 44 and 45 in the amount of $57,960.42. Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. I just want to note that in the packet, it did say warrant number 45 and 45, just as a heads up. Sean, would you close this out, please?
Yes, so warrant 46 and 47 in the amount of $389,537.50. I had one question that I forgot to ask you, Eric. There is different wattages notated on our streetlights. How is that determined? Do you, and if you do not know the answer, I look forward to finding out.
If it's, if it's between like 15 and 20 watts, then that would be that we have some intersections that have smaller areas that are covered by the LED lights and some that are just slightly higher wattage to cover higher square footages.
Thank you. And so there was a marker replaced at the cemetery for $450. We had some sand purchased with Cushing for $3,256. We paid the last of the snow and ice with Cushing for $27,492. There was a further payment out to mainland for their contract work on both the corner project and ball field for $618.75. And then our RSU 38 budget, $288,602.91.
I will make a motion to approve.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve warrants 46 and 47 in the final amount of $389,537.15. Is there any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much, and thank you, Sean, for your summaries. We'd like to move now to communications. We have 30 minutes allotted for Select Board communications. If any members of the Select Board would like to speak now would be your time. Um, okay, sorry. Yep, go ahead. Ralph is not going to be here, nope.
Ralph has an illness, not COVID, but he's not feeling well, so.
Yes, then I guess I would like to just make a note to remind the general public that you may not move any campaign signs that are in the right of way. Regardless, as long as they're in the right of way, they have to stay up until elections take place. And you also are not allowed to deface campaign signs that are placed. Those are state laws, is that correct, Eric?
Yeah.
Right. Okay.
Is that happening? I've heard of
Evidently, yes.
Someone else mention that, what's that?
Yes. One of my signs was defaced, but I'm not speaking as a candidate. I'm just trying to remind people that those are the laws for every candidate, for every sign, wherever they're placed.
Sorry to hear that.
Anyone else? Um, I would just like to say thank you very much to everyone. We had our first Heritage Days meeting and planning. It was great to speak with different organizations. Again, our next meeting is Sunday at 1:00 PM, and that is when you can come in and hear our next step. We're going to be getting some of the information together for all the events, and it should be a great year for Heritage Days. Second weekend in August, August 12 and 13. Here is Nunzi Graziano, who created our graphics on Facebook. Robin and Rocco are very proud, and we thank you for Reed Field, so thank you. We move now for 10
So I just, yeah, go ahead and think of something.
Yeah, go for it.
I just want to thank the guys for getting the new signs up at the beach. Those look fantastic.
Lovely. Gosh, it's a whole breath of fresh air.
Yes, so it's nice to finally see those, those were designed by someone from the Rec Board, so thank you, everybody, for getting that done.
And now, without further ado, we move for 10 minutes for Town Staff Reports. The Treasures Report, we start with for April 2022, Eric.
Okay, I'll try to run through this quickly because things are looking pretty good for the, for the month and the year to date. This covers the months of April, as Dennis mentioned. Check reconciliation is completed through the 30th of the month. Our accounts are in balance, and there was no unusual activity observed. We are wrapping up FY '21 audit, and will be almost immediately working on the FY '22 audit with budget. Our final budget hearing for it will be June 2nd, 2022 at 6:30 PM. That's been a long process, but we're getting towards the, the end of that. We've had a dozen or so public meetings, not including some of the special hearings we've had, so I'm really pleased with that process, the work of the Select Board, the work of the Budget Committee, and the many, many boards and committees that contributed and staff that contributed to that process. So looking forward to finalizing that process. Moving on to comments for the month. We have a few adjusting journals. We don't normally have more than like one, but we have two or three in there. Sometimes just to move funds from, from one account to another because they were put in the wrong account. So we had a couple of adjusting journals, but we're still below what we normally see for activity for the month. Revenues and expenses should be around 83%. Revenues or, excuse me, receipts are up for both the month and the year to date. Revenues are up over 14% for the month and up over 10% for the year. Revenues from late tax payments are actually down significantly for both the month and the year. And that's a good sign because that means that people are paying their taxes and they're not having any trouble or not having much trouble with, with late payments, and that's always a positive sign. We budget for it, and every year I'm glad when we, when we don't collect that money, so that's always good to see. Expenses are down for both the month and the year to date. That is mostly related to fewer capital expenses. But with both revenues up and expenses down for the month and the year to date, things are looking quite good. We're in a good financial position, and as we enter the final quarter of the year. And then looking at percentages for the various individual departments and divisions. Everything's about where it should be on target. A few anomalies here and there, but things are looking very good otherwise. And that's my Treasury's report for the month of April. I'm happy to take any questions.
Oh, all right. Let's move right along to the Town Manager Report.
Okay. So this one's going to be a little bit longer. I've got a lot of updates and a lot of activity, but I'll try to move through it quickly. We are looking for three-quarter time maintenance and transfer station employee to help with summer work, but also to be available in the winter time. This is a position that we've kind of cobbled together from a few different part-time pieces. So definitely looking forward to filling that one. We also have an employee meeting scheduled for this Thursday, the 19th. And we haven't had one of those for, for over a year. COVID's been very difficult with people being sick and trying to schedule things. So it will be a nice change to have folks back together again to talk about the things that we do together as employees of the town. Administratively, the staff, office staff have been increasingly occupied preparing for the upcoming state referendum and town meeting, secret ballot vote. That will be happening on June 14th from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. We also have our last public hearing once again on June 2nd at 6:30 PM. Absentee ballots are currently available for both the town and state. The school ballots are not yet available. Those will be coming out on Wednesday after they do their, their vote. So we're very close to being able to send out people, send out full, full packets of ballots to people. But the town and state are in and available. We have a lot of information available on the town of Reed Field website. I spent some time this weekend pulling things together even more, so everything is up that needs to be up. And we have a lot of information, so go to www.reedfieldmaine.org about the issues and all of that business. Moving on to different project updates, the Comprehensive Plan Committee is set to meet again this week after a few months off to try to reorganize. We have new staff at the Kennebec Valley Council of Governments in their planning roles, and that's going to be a big help for us. The inconsistency there has been challenging, but they're, they filled their staff positions, and we're going to be working with them again, starting this, this week. Moving on to Reed Field Corner Sidewalk Traffic and Safety. This is a kind of a group of projects that relate to traffic safety, and the Reed Field Corner is kind of the focal of that, or at least was last year, but we're moving, moving on. We are still planning on issuing an RFP for design services for the Church Road sidewalk. That is a separate RFP process than anything else that's happening in the area. We are still a few years out on even potentially having construction begin, and that is again a federally funded project that we have an 80/20 match on. So a large majority of the cost for that public infrastructure are being paid for through grants. Design work is complete for the area in front of the Masonic Hall, and the RFP will be issued in conjunction with other projects. Notably, the intersection for P Ridge and Nickerson Hill that is going to be reconfigured. That survey work is complete and design work is in progress. Those two projects at the corner and, and the intersection of Nickerson, and also paving, depending on what happens in June, potentially paving the library parcel line. So a good bit of, of work happening there. Moving on to signs. We did complete the sign installation on South Road for the RSU, so all of those signs have been replaced with the proper signage. We had some stuff up there that, that really showed that there was some activity, but it was the wrong sign. So that's been, that's been corrected after probably 15 years of being up there. But we also did put in those new signs for crosswalk markings at Kent's Hill. Those were, were very helpful, I think, in giving people notice that there's a crosswalk approaching. We did have one visibility issue that was brought to our attention by a residence. We went and moved and raised the height of the sign, so we actually were able to find a compromise there and provide that notice to residents that there's a crosswalk ahead, but also help that resident get what they were looking for, so that's a win-win in my book. We did also put in the central line crosswalk signs, one there and one at the beach, both on 17, and both were badly damaged within two weeks by vehicles striking them. So we're hoping that, I know it's not funny, those are like 200 bucks a piece, just for the top half. But we are going to be replacing those. They're valuable, and I think over time, people will become more familiar with them and hopefully hit them less.
I was going to mention that one problem, at least with the one up in Kent's Hill, is twice we had to stop and move it out of the center of the travel lane because people had been hitting it and it kept moving over. And of course, most people don't stop, they just try to drive around those things. So if, I guess someone actually wiped it out because we noticed it was missing. But we may want to think about if that's really very effective. I mean, it does slow people down.
Visually, it helps.
But if they're running into them and then they're a traffic hazard, that's not helpful.
No, understood. I think we might try to, try to anchor the base so it doesn't walk. And if someone hits it, they have to be, it'd have to be over the center line, or at least on the center line.
Right. And if you slow down, there's plenty of room.
So they weren't anchored?
No, they're, they're, it's a, it's a heavy weighted base.
Like rubberized.
Yeah. Rubberized. It's like a tire material that's been condensed and packed in to make a four-inch, like, weighs like 100 pounds anyway, but I think the next step is to anchor those so that they don't get pushed around.
I noticed when we were in Winthrop recently that they have several right along in Main Street where their storefronts are. And when you have long pickup trucks with trailer hitches parked in their diagonal parking, and one of those is nearby, you can't pass. You can't go through.
Yep.
So I think we do have to be very careful about slowing traffic down, but not making it too skinny so that it's dangerous.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I think we're able to do that at Kent's Hill, especially the beach area. The beach area is wide open.
Well, I mean, if people were going the speed limit.
They probably wouldn't hit.
And maybe using stop signs, not like their yield signs.
But point taken, and we're going to continue to observe that. That was an experiment. We want to see how people respond to it, and if it, I mean, it definitely slows people down, but you're right. If it becomes a hazard, we want to keep an eye on that.
Thank you.
Yeah. So moving on to the fire station and library, excuse me, work that were part of that bond from last year. Those two projects are still on hold. Excuse me. Moving on to maintenance and infrastructure more broadly.
Are they going to be coming off of hold?
They, they, they will. They're on the, the list is, is 40 items, and I have capacity for 20. That's
Nantial from people?
From, from, from me, but also from, from having kind of those rolling staff shortages over the past year. We haven't been able to really get the work done that has been necessary to prepare and get those projects moved ahead.
Got it, thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's an uncomfortable situation to be in, but we have to, like I said, we have to pick priorities sometimes. The road weight limit signs were lifted the last week of April. No major road damage was observed. We did have some potholes happen on Church Road. But again, that is the, the last or the, the next road to be paved in the paving cycle. And we will be issuing an RFP for paving of Church Road in the next few weeks. Some sections will be ground where we have more of the, the alligator type cracking happening. But we will definitely be doing a shim over the entire length and then followed by a one-inch overlay. And that should put that road in pretty good shape. We're also going to be doing some significant ditching and drainage work, particularly by the cemetery stretch where we seem to have most of the, the pothole issues happening. The RFP for, oh, Winter Roads, again, that was something we've been working on for a few months now, several months. And after we had that RFP where folks attended the pre-bid but did not attend, did not submit bids, I did reach out to all four of the prospective bidders, asked them to, if they had any interest in pursuing a contract. The only one that responded affirmatively was Horn Construction. So I am working with Scott Horn to develop a, a contract for the town of Reed Field for winter road maintenance for the upcoming season. That contract, the, the general details have been discussed with the road committee. We are going to see another price increase, but that's, that's not necessarily a surprise when you have a sole bid environment and the price of diesel and other inputs is, is going up. So I should have a contract for the board to review later this month, but I'm going to be cautious and say that we'll have one for June, for the June Select Board meeting. And that will be good to have that squared away so we can have certainty about who's going to provide that service when the time comes.
And
Yes.
Do we, so the road committee has the amount of that contract?
Yes, and I can say that right now it's, and it's probably going to stay right around this area, $385,000 for the, for the first year of the contract.
And that's $149,000 more than this year.
It's in that range, yeah. It depends on whether or not you include the, the full list of materials or just the contract work proper.
Carol?
Just asking, like, since we don't know what fuel's going to do in the next year, is there something, like, is that in that quote that they're giving, or does it fluctuate as, as prices fluctuate?
Right now, it's a fixed price, and we've already talked, I've talked to Scott again this morning about the fact that, that we needed to iron out some of those details. He seems to be willing to hold that price that he has in there because it did have some padding. But if the time comes where we have a contractor that would be losing money if they weren't able to charge a pass-through at the very least for the fuel cost, we would negotiate in good faith to make that whole. We're not trying to make someone lose money, so, yeah.
Anything else?
Yes, a few more things on the report here, and I'm, I'm almost done.
No worries.
There's a lot, like I said, a lot going on. Cemetery mowing is starting in earnest, and we're on track to have the cemeteries fully prepared, and I won't say manicured, because that's a little bit of the wrong impression, but we're going to look really good for Memorial Day. So I'm excited about that. We've got Ben and Matt working diligently on that, and we're hopefully, like I said, going to have that three-quarter time person hired in the next couple of weeks for the town. The spring street sweeping is complete. If anybody notices anything that's not, has not been done or not done well, let me know, and we'll get the contractor back in to take a look at that. We also will be moving on to crack sealing and striping as the next items. Once the street sweeping is done, we can then touch on those and get those pieces taken care of. The beach, Sean mentioned that, the signs are up, but also we had a bunch of yard work done down there. A lot of it was done there, but I want to thank the kids from Kent's Hill School and Marana Cook for all of their spring volunteer work. It's been done all over town, in people's backyards, at our public facilities. It's been fantastic and always is to have them volunteer and help out, so I want to say thanks for that. The last area I want to touch on is the transfer station, and the electronic payment system we've been working with has proved to be very beneficial. It's reduced the, the redundancy, or it's eliminated redundancy in processing. We no longer write a receipt and then have to tally the receipts and then have to pass those in for the town finance officer to then re-enter. Now it's all done electronically, and it's been a huge benefit for, for that piece of the process. But also, people enjoy being able to use their swipe cards at the transfer station for most transactions. So it's, it's been really good. We've had some hiccups, but we're learning how to deal and overcome with those, so moving along very well. Project updates, the transfer station, I'll be quick. The swap shop is open again, and we have a new location in the old, what used to be, I guess, a break room and storage facility. It's got new shelving, and I want to thank Catherine for her, you know, significant effort and contributions in getting that thing open again because we'd had it shut down because of operational issues and COVID and everything else, and thank you, Catherine, for pushing that forward. It's a benefit for a lot of people in town to have that. It's, it's a bit of a headache for me, but, but that's okay. You know, we're, we're going to make it happen, and we're going to get a lot of value out of it. The damaged concrete curbing that was in front of the hoppers has been repaired. That was a precursor to the new steel safety guidelines and guide rails and gates that are going to be in place. Those are partially installed, and those will be completed. The installation will be completed this Wednesday. So we're really wrapping up that part of the process, the, the main building. All the work that Audette's Construction did, Audette's is a local company here in Reed Field. They did some fantastic work touching up that building. Also, we had town staff working on the other building, the Compteur Building, that has a new floor, new paint, and it's going to be, it's just a world of difference from what it was before. Also, the attendant booth has a new floor as well, so we're really trying to maintain that facility and give people the impression that it isn't the dump. It's not a place where you come and throw your trash around, it's not a place where you come and arouse the staff. It's a town facility, and it's clean and it's well-maintained, and we want people to treat it respectfully. So we're trying to put that out there by leading by example. So I also want to highlight the fact that we, that Mike and Karen have been paying very close attention to the organics management area and also the compost program. They've done a lot of work moving that stuff around, making sure that's available to residents. And I just want to thank both Mike and Karen for their work in, in the organics management area. So that's my report. Sorry, it was so long, but it's been a busy month.
You did a great job. It was
Thank you, Eric.
Start with Catherine, please.
Just a quick follow-up to something Carol had suggested at our last meeting, that we have signage put up that attendance can help people with opening the gates
Yes.
if they need it. Now that the gates are about to go up, I think that was what you had suggested, Carol.
It is.
Something to See an attendant if you need assistance.
I'm such a rule, like, I would never in a million years think, well, I'm just going to grab this steel bar and move it out of the way, so I, I think it's a great idea. Really nice.
Right, and we don't want people to try and lift things that are too heavy or too large, long, and, and fall.
Absolutely right.
Yes.
Go ahead, Sean.
Sorry. I know this is probably not an exciting topic for some that work in the transfer station, but when will our summer hours
Sunday.
After Memorial Day.
That Karen said, oh, she said soon.
It's sorry, it's between Memorial and Labor Day.
So we never
It's not the Sunday of Memorial Day.
That's right.
It's the one after.
That's what I just wanted to check.
And then it's not open on the Sunday just before Labor Day. So it's in between.
Gotcha.
You know, and we are, I hope
It is in the messenger.
I hope we're settling in on a routine for that because it is nice to have that consistency. And it's a half day, just to remind people, 8 to noon on Sundays, and we will have our hazardous waste collection day coming up in July. I want to say the 11th or 12th, but
It's the 11th.
It's the 11th, okay. And there'll also be 8 to noon as well for that, so.
Maybe, I know they don't have anything to do at the transfer station. That was sarcasm, but maybe they could put it up on the sign, opening June, whatever the date is, Sundays, 8 to 12.
Yeah, I'll have them put the summer hours out.
Because the people who are going to the transfer station are the ones who want to know that, and that's where they'll see it because they're there.
Yes.
Absolutely.
All right, and then we have summer hours. We also wanted to publicize that hazardous waste day.
It's already on the Facebook page.
Awesome, thanks, Dennis.
July 11th.
July 11th.
Anything else for Eric for his reports? Thank you. We will move right along as we are keeping a very good agenda.
It's actually the 10th.
I was going to say, that says Monday.
Oh, well, then very well.
Yeah, it was the 11th last year.
So it's on a Sunday?
It's on a Sunday.
That helps avoid conflict with our very busy Saturday schedule.
Absolutely.
People were very happy last year when we did it on Sunday, so.
We move now to boards, committees, commissions, and departments. We received minutes. From committees that were, let's see here. We received them from.
It's on page twenty-nine.
Thank you. Library minutes of March second, age-friendly minutes of March ninth, and the cemetery committee from March twenty-first. Is there any discussion? Okay, great, thank you. Oh, go ahead, Carol.
Have one little tidbit.
Yes.
On page seventy-nine is the cemetery one, and if. It's like the notations that they were there were like up higher, but then the minutes were like way at the end, so I don't know. They can kind of come together, but on page seventy-nine, it talks about the Reach Across America.
Yes.
I just have a quick question. So one of the members said the committee should not bear the responsibility and time of fundraising. And I found that like. Who better than the cemetery committee to do that? But if that is something they may not want to undertake and people think it's worthy, which I think it probably would be. Maybe a veterans group could or local veteran, but I was a little bit troubled by that little comment that.
Yeah, understood.
To have that, but not us, that was.
Yeah, well, it would be a new program, so it would be something that would stretch that already thin committee a little bit further. And I think what they're, I think they were, they were trying to say, I think, is that they want to share that responsibility. They're happy to bring it up and sponsor it and things like that, but yeah, no, it it definitely is something that they have an interest in. But but they'd like to be a shared responsibility.
Because I think it said something like you had to have volunteers before you could even work with WAA, like Reach Across America, you had to have like a certain number of volunteers. So it sounds like that would come before we get too deep into it, is somebody like organizing stuff.
Absolutely, and I think that we can do something like what we did during COVID, where we had a a push to get volunteers together to help. With getting things for neighbors and stuff like that, but I think we can do a, you know, kind of a PR thing on that and try to. I'd love to do that to help out, so yeah, I I think that's a possibility.
I know there's like some very active, of course, veterans in the area that are great planners and volunteers, so.
Yeah, John Lord, I think would be interested, I can reach out to him.
Larry Perkins, John Tyler, and Dodge.
Absolutely.
Awesome, thank you, Carol. Anything else? Very well, thank you to those committees. We move now for ten minutes for public communication where members of the public may address the select board. Is there anyone here to select? Yes, absolutely. Just if you do me a favor, just go ahead and state your name when you get up there where you live. And if there are people who are. Online to also speak, we'll give you that opportunity in just a second. Thank you.
Thanks for having me. I'm Brent West. I love that thirteen fog. Been there since two thousand sixteen. I love it here in Reedfield. I. I had been on Conservation Commission, I think I'm still on there technically, but started a new job up in Franklin County, so I've been less available. I came here tonight to ask a few questions, but also, you know, raise a few issues with a couple of the projects I see. In town, and I figured the role of board and town manager are to be checks and balances on each other. And to help inform the public.
And what did you say your name was?
Brent West.
Brent West, thank you very much.
So, you know, just first, I love the community. Help write the grants for the expansion of the parking lot at the ball field. Replace all the trail facilities in town as far as the bridges and stuff like that through the Conservation Commission. Had my kid run at the Reedfield Recreation Center's egg hunt, you know, so I tried to be involved. I'm not someone who. Shows up and I hope that you take that is that, you know, I try to understand that you guys are trying to get good input. And Eric's working as a one person with his staff. So I'm not here just to criticize projects that have been vetted for a year, put out and stuff, but there is a few things that I felt I should say. First one I was hoping to ask you about was the broadband that is coming up on the bill. And last year when it was voted on, I really didn't know anything about it, and I guess. You know, like a typical resident, I should have spent more time over last year learning more about it, but I have now, so I've read. The entirety of all the broadband committee minutes and read the Reedfield fiber. And there's a few things that I was concerned with, with the upcoming committee's proposals to send out mailers. To everyone in town. I feel like they have a one-sided view of the options presented to Reedfield voters. I understand there's some people that don't have good internet internet in town. There's some people that don't have any internet. And to me, I do see that as a basic human need. Right now, it's like everyone needs it. But I was surprised in the March second minutes that Spectrum offered a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollar option to connect all that. And so I said, how can that, it can't be that simple. Why would we propose a five million dollar bond if there's a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollar solution? And the broadband committee explained it as, you know, there's been people who are unsatisfied with Spectrum's. Offerings and that some of the people on the end of the lines don't have the internet speed that would be offered with this town. Infrastructure, and although I feel that's fair. You know, the prices are such a drastic difference. I don't know why we aren't giving the voters the option. It seems like we're separating the vote. From the marketing of the project, and the marketing of the project is happening before the townspeople have had an informed vote. And, you know, broadband committee also said with Spectrum, there could be nodes added to the people on those lines that needed better internet. So I would ask that we get that quote before we spend the five million. I know it's on the warrant and that's probably gonna. Go through. It seems like people think that's a good idea, but it's. As I voted, it was an uninformed vote because I didn't know there was a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollar option and a five million dollar option. Eric said we couldn't.
I just want to let you know that if you have another question, if you want to ask us, we have about five minutes allotted for you.
Okay, great. Also, then I'll just be quick to put out my few things. Eric wouldn't let us know at the broadband committee, how many people needed to subscribe for the project to be successful. He said that was a private contractual. Obligation. I feel that as a voter, I should know how many people Axiom needs to subscribe.
Can I? Take a motion to extend his time?
He still has time available, so let's let him, yeah.
So, you know, I got Adam that they said they needed about five hundred people to make a success, but we didn't know. What the fail point is for the project. So if there's only three hundred people to sign up, what does that mean for taxpayers? What does that mean for my internet service? You know, the broadband committee, I think, is doing a really good job. I think they are vetting projects. I think that we're just not getting the full picture to the people who are voting. Southport is working with Axiom right now. They just had a citizens referendum to recall their bond. And the Axiom's president at a town meeting, such what I have in June second, said to the townspeople. You guys will be in breach of contract. So I am concerned about the customer service of the new offering.
About one minute.
Yeah. I would appreciate the motion.
Yep.
So Eric talks about staff capacity. I also wonder what's the staff capacity when there's customer service issues which should go to. Axiom, but who's easier to come visit, the the broadband? And I just feel like I would ask you guys to stop the mailers if you can. And put in the full picture for voters. Because it looks like it's just for the approved.
Thank you.
Project.
We're gonna get a chance to answer that, I think, so.
No, we have, we don't usually do that now, and I spoke with Brent at length at our broadband meeting for about an hour.
Do you feel that? Anybody else? Carol, do you have any questions?
That topic.
Yeah, very well. Thank you. But do you have something else?
I did. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
I love the ball fields. I love the trails up there. As I said before, I helped grant the project there to extend the parking area. As part of the grant. A few concerns I had there was the basketball field court is still being sited in a wetland. And as you know. Pavement, as Eric was just mentioning, the pavement outside that very same area is having issues because of its in a wetland. I would assume that this would still have it. I don't think the ba- the basketball portion of the project will get much use. There's not really any data to support how many people might use that. I think it's been a fairly well-vetted project. I'm not, you know, everyone disagrees on some things. But I do notice that in the current baseball games, the parking lot does fill up already, and the plan does not consider. Expanding the parking lot currently. That's another concern I would have. And the last thing to keep under time. We haven't applied for any grants, and this is a shoe fit for the Land and Water Conservation Fund, which is a fifty percent match. So I think we could offset at least two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of this project with a grant to them. Something I'd be wanting to work on if you guys would maybe make a motion that if it is passed, that we would first try for that. And I would help write that. That's what I do for a living, is write recreation grants and. Be the help offset those costs. But thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Carol, did you have a question?
I didn't hear who you said about the grant.
There's, there's a land and water conservation fund and towns and states are the only ones that can apply for it. Recently. The feds have authorized a higher allocation amount, so there is a lot of money. Actually, Maine is in a position where. They don't have a lot of projects that have good matches, so if this passes, we have match in hand. Why not try to go for some of those things?
Sean? Just, we have applied for that, and so that one's been applied for in an alpha loan grant, so there are two grants in process, just so you know. To try to offset those costs, but until we get a little bit further on, we can't. Until we get the final cost and then the vote, you need a lot of that for some of these grants. But just so you know, we are definitely wanting to not. Leave anything on the table like that.
Yeah, and it was just. Usually I work at the other side of things where it's like you get grant and then vote, so it's just opposite of what I'm used to.
So Brent, I just had a quick question. Is that the same one that the town of Winthrop got significant funding for for their Narco- Narco. More Cross Point project, or was that a different?
I'm not sure about that one, but we can go online. There's a map. There's been hundreds of successful grants across municipalities, I mean.
Yeah, well, I appreciate the offer too of helping work with that. That'll be excellent.
It's a big grant and it's not, you know, it's not easy, so that capacity issue.
I think Winthrop is getting half of three million dollars from whatever fund it is. At first, they were only going to take half of like a million. And then the the people, that whatever that group is, came back and said, we'll pay half of the whole project if you guys approve it. Which meant the town had to come up with the other half, but they were like, wait a minute, if someone's offering us half of this, this is the time to take advantage, so that's what they did.
Yeah, and the the only, I think, it's it's not going to sunset, it's a permanent allocation, so like if we wanted to just do the ball field and figure that one out before. We, you know, people feel like sometimes you have to do everything at once, and that's not always the case.
Excellent. Thank you, Brent. I hope you feel like you were able to get out everything you needed to say. That's great. Thank you very much. Very well, yes, that's our next step. If there's anyone on the line who would like to. Hi there. Hello, Emily.
Hi, hi there. I apologize if I missed an email or if this is not the appropriate time, but I sent in my application for a liquor license. And wondered if we could go through that process.
Okay. We don't have any, do you have a record of this?
I I probably do, but it's not on the agenda tonight.
Yeah, so Emily, when it is on the agenda, because you are listed on that license request, it will, you will be notified. And then you will be able to zoom back into us if you'd like and tell us about it.
Okay, great. I, I was, I thought I was on today's agenda from an email with Eric about a month ago, and then I dropped off the paperwork last week. So if if it's not tonight, that's fine. I just want to make sure that paperwork and check is somewhere safe.
Sure, absolutely. If you did, it is. Hang on one second.
Emily, is this for a one-time, like catering event, or is this for a new business?
This is for a one-time. Our reunion is June tenth through the twelfth next month.
Okay, and we're not meeting again until the thirteenth of June.
Yeah, we could try to do a special one on the twenty-fifth.
I I don't want it, I can't do it tonight. I don't.
Yeah, no, no, no.
We need to follow through on this because she needs to have that.
Absolutely, yeah. I I don't know what happened with the paperwork last week. We were down to one, one staff person, two were out with COVID. But we'll find out what happened and we will make sure you get taken care of.
Yeah, sounds good. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Emily. Have a good night.
Take care. Bye.
All right, thank you, Eric. As you can tell, it's all, never a dull moment. We, if there's nothing else, we're going to move now to appointments, reappointments, and resignations. We have five minutes allotted for item twenty-two, one twenty-four, which is to consider the resignation of Patrick McCormick from the Broadband Internet Committee.
I would make a motion to accept the resignation from Patrick McCormick with regret from the Broadband Committee.
It's been moved and seconded to. To accept the resignation of Patrick McCormick from the Broadband Internet Committee. Any for your work up until now, all in favor? All right. We now move to old business, forty-five minutes allotted for the following items. Twenty-two, zero, sixty-two is to hear an update and consider next steps for the Fairgrounds Community Park and Conservation Project Status. We have Hannah Flannery here with us. We have ten minutes allotted for this. If you don't mind going on up to the podium. Oh, we have handouts. Thank you very much.
We've seen it already. That's why we're just passing it.
Haven't yet. I was gonna wait for the nice glossy once to.
So Hannah Flannery, Reedfield Rec. I just want to like add a little light to the fact that most people think the basketball, or some people I've heard don't think the basketball court's going to get used. We had almost two hundred kids sign up for our basketball rec program last winter. That's in all of our towns that we serve in our school district. And no other town has an outdoor basketball court to service kids, so I am pretty passionate about the basketball court getting plenty of use. That's my own feedback there.
Thank you.
The update is, so we have a trifold brochure. We really, last time I was here, I talked about getting education out there, more about the project. I've kind of started asking random people I know in town who know about the project, but most people haven't heard anything about it, which is understandable. In that we've spent a lot of time developing a plan, and now we need to get a little more word out there to everybody to understand what the plan is. So the trifold brochures are getting printed in color to leave here at the town office, library, anywhere else that we can put them. I don't know if it's allowable to leave them at the corner store, but I feel like that's a high-traffic point in town, so we'll see if that's okay or not. So there's that, and then, as Sean mentioned, we have applied for a couple of grants. We're also still waiting on final. Cost analysis. I don't know what else. We do want to put a few articles out there, but there's also the explanation of the warrant itself, so there's. A few parts there as to what to put out for educational.
What is the timeline, do you think, Hannah, for when these trifolds and when information?
So the trifold should hopefully be done tomorrow, like they're at the copy place right now, getting like the first five hundred copies done. So that we can get those out. Oh, the other place we were going to leave them also is at the trail kiosk at the fairground.
Is there an electronic version of this that we'll be able to?
Is, yeah, we could definitely load that.
Perfect. I I just want to say, it seems like, yes, this has been, you know, a number of different stakeholders in this, and I like the plan. I I think it's it's such an easy thing to do, very easy. To imagine all of the things that won't happen. And what I think the hardest thing to do in a situation like this is have the ability to look forward. With an eye towards building capacity and making our town better. So that's what I think is is my takeaway from this evening. And and I appreciate the hard work you've done on that. Anyone else have anything for Hannah? Go ahead, Eric.
I was just gonna add a few comments regarding where things stand with the engineers and all that business.
Okay, although the technical.
Why don't you go? I'd like to hear that.
Sure, so. There are some concerns about the, you know, where all of this. Sure. So there are some concerns about the, you know, where all of this is going to lie on the landscape. One of the, the key issues is the wetland impacts. There, there will be wetland impacts. There's no question about that. The question is how we manage and mitigate those and whether or not that would trigger any kind of special permitting with DEP. The, the engineers feel very strongly that, that a majority of that basketball court is not going to be in a wetland, only a small portion of that area will be. And they're convinced that, and their plan they're developing is going to show that that can be mitigated through appropriate drainage work and, and trying to make sure that the water flows appropriately both above ground and below ground. So that we don't end up with ponding water like what we have in that area now. They're going to do the same thing with the lower portion of the fields as well. There's a retention, a smaller retention area may be required as well, but we should in the next couple of days be receiving their, what they call their 70% design. It's not something you would go to bid with for a contractor, but it shows all the details, all the proposed drainage structures, layout, grades, and all of that information. That's very important for two things, to get a full scope of the project and to get a reliable cost estimate for the project. So along with that design, that's a, that will be the 70% plan, we'll be getting a revised cost estimate. And they did assure me that their, their review so far has shown that we will be in, in the 4,000 square foot range as far as impacts for the wetlands and that they will not trigger a higher level of review or requirement that, that would need say transfer of, of land into a, into a preserve or paying of development fees. That happens when you get above, I think it's at 15,000 square feet and we're going to be well below that. So those issues, we've been very keen on trying to address those with the, the design that's being put forward. And yeah, the work that's been done with Hannah and the other folks to prepare for educating people about this project. I really appreciate it. I've been able to look at my little narrow piece and they've been able to look at a broader piece and I appreciate all that help. So thank you.
Carol?
Um, I do see that there was a tiny little thing about expect some organizational grants. I was hoping that was in there somewhere. Unfortunately, we can't list what we've done because you guys have done a lot of work on that. Biggest thing that people are looking at is the dollar amount and it's, you guys have done great work and I'm hoping they come through and I'm sure some of it will. So maybe if that's what we can talk up.
The other thing, and I, I like synergy. So this is something I was thinking because I know there will be events this year for heritage days at the fairgrounds. So, you know, I, I think it might be an opportunity, you know, pending the vote, if everything is approved, it might be nice to have some of those little planted signs that have different, and I love the idea of having the QR codes because it's nice when you can just pop it up on your phone. So just another idea too about trying to get the word out, once the word out in terms of voting, then letting people put sort of two and two together in front of them. So I agree.
One last thing, I thank the rec board, but I should also thank the conservation commission for their work to push all this stuff ahead. They actually last Friday had a site walk where they brought back out that native species and pollinator expert along with somebody else. They actually had two people come out and I was able to meet with them at the fairgrounds and look at the field, talk about field management and mowing. And they're making a lot of effort to really take this pollinator garden and the idea of using it as an educational tool, not just an aesthetic thing or an environmental thing, but as an educational tool. So I think they've, they've, they've done a lot to show that they, you know, want this to work. And I think everybody's working very well together right now. We had a little bit of a rough start, but I think we're all coming together on it and it's really good to see.
It's always nice for, to drive that. One more thing, yeah.
So somebody did mention like a grandpa was trying to go down to the ball fields and it was very challenging. Is that pretty much just a walking path we have from parking to like the ball fields below? Somebody was saying if there's just even one or two handicap parking spots down there or somewhere, somebody can let somebody out of the car and turn around and come back up.
I don't know where that came from because right now the handy, the trails are wheelchair accessible, all the trails, those trails that have been there existing are handicap accessible. And so that won't change. If anything, it'll get a little bit easier. But, but they are currently handicap accessible. So folks can get down to the bleachers and right down to behind the home plate.
But it's not made for vehicles at all.
Not for vehicles, no, but it, but it is wheelchair and handicap accessible.
I think this was a walker, but a very slow walker. And it was, I guess the grading and stuff was.
Yes. But I think that in the new plan, it's for an eight foot wide trail so that someone could take.
Much shorter. But it goes off the parking lot.
And can't people get down to the vehicles just by asking the gate to be open?
Yeah, they need the gate open. And we've kind of discouraged it because of some of the comments made by other committees about too much parking happening.
But for instance, somebody could use.
Someone who's handicapped, absolutely. Like the gate can be open and they can drive down.
And drop off and come back up.
Just right. Or we could have a gator or a golf cart like, you know, someone could donate it or maybe someone has an old one or whatever, but that could be a vehicle that's used. If you have specific events, like for heritage days, we arranged to have a bus from the school. So if we were having some specific event where we felt it would be useful change for, because we would have a path that would be very suitable for someone to use that, that on. And that wouldn't be a, a regularly used vehicle that would, you know, go off and dig things up and be a problem for other people.
Right. But maybe for events and things where there's something being held in the field space that's created.
Off only sign where people won't go down and park, but just go see grandpa to the bleachers and then high tail it back up, whatever.
Certainly something to think about.
But not high tail it back up.
No.
That's right. Just in the sake of the agenda, Sean, you'll be the last thing we want to hear.
Oh, I don't know if that's nice or not. The, I, I did have a conversation with Bruce last week from conservation commission vote. And once we get that, you know, that we need to have a convening of the minds in terms of a management plan on what does work, right? How do, what do we need in order to make it so that it continues to be accessible? So that people can access it, so that it's maintained properly. So the education's all there. So I do hope that we can get some good group together after for that.
I'm gonna just put this in on the end. We had, I can't remember how many, but I'm going to guess it was probably at least five different people who came in with you last, during the last year saying, could we please have a basketball court? We can't play at the schools. An example, I guess they don't have an outside basketball court. I didn't realize that, but they have.
They have a few outside ones at the school, but.
Right. But, um, you know, they, they've got a nice facility and there's no reason that Reed Field can't have something like that for our residents, for similar communities. And that's all they were asking for. They weren't asking for, you know, a stadium just for something that we can use here in Reed Field. So I, there is absolutely a demonstrated need.
Well, if you look around and see how many basketball courts are in driveways, which are very hard to do, and you could do a layup against the drive, you know.
Exactly. Play one on none. Thank you very much Hannah for all of your work. Thank you to all of the committees involved. Thank you to all of the smart people who are making this happen. So thank you very much. We now, what's that?
I just wanted to, before Sean's point went, went, went someplace else, it's a very good point that that should be a goal. I think it's one that the board can and should commit to when we do our agenda setting and our goal setting.
Like a new management plan.
Exactly. Yeah. If, if, if this comes to pass.
So what now?
Thank you, Hannah. You may exit or stick around. It should be a wild last hour. 21068, hear an update and consider next steps for broadband internet. We have 20 minutes for this item. Is there anyone that would like to lead off? Top of the order.
I'll just say really quickly, we, we, we do hear folks that have concerns about this. I, I hear it. I, I understand it. I think that there's a growing uncertainty on the economic front. But this project does a lot of things at once and it doesn't do it for everybody. There are people in this town who will not save money by doing this. But one of the things that was included in the select board packet was the goals that this board started with. And those goals included universal access of the same level of service. It included finding something that was cost effective, something that would provide gigabit service to everybody. Those were goals from, from two or three years ago, and we followed those goals. So the, the answer to pretty much every question about why something didn't happen usually results from a, a service provider not meeting one of those goals. And so this has been a very deliberate process. And I think that the, the fact that we've stayed true to those goals and those very community oriented, you know, items is what's led to, has what has led to this, this place where we are putting forward a recommendation to the community. And this isn't necessarily a, you know, bringing up, you know, a contract to the community to vote on like we would with, you know, with the plow contract, we don't take a community vote on the plow contract. The, the board was tasked with bringing forward a recommendation that includes the select board and the broadband committee. And so that process worked through and what we have is a recommend. Foundation. It is a proposal and it does meet all those goals. So if it looks like it's being promoted as a positive and something that, that, you know, is seen as a recommendation, it's because it is. That's what we were asked to do. And so I feel that we've done our due diligence. We know there are risks with projects like this. Broadband is not something that is, is easy. I can tell you with absolute certainty that I will not be answering phone calls about tech issues for, for broadband. That's why we have a third party service provider. You know, once in a while in the wintertime, I get a call about road conditions, but most of those do go to the contractor. And this would be that to the extreme. We, we don't have the time, the interest or the, or, or the contractual obligation to do that work. That falls to the third party service provider. So I, I know there's concern about capacity, but we're approaching it this way in large part because we know the limits of our capacity. We know that we can help, you know, build infrastructure, again, through a third party, we can help convene people to, to do things like the broadband committee that will help with, if there are questions about being provided by Axiom. So everybody has a role. My role would be to facilitate and to keep a high level. And the broadband committee would have something of a, of a governance role and an intermediary role. The good thing is that none of these roles exist with current internet service providers. We don't have a relationship with these folks. They don't is that meet the needs of our residents. And the whole goal of this broadband project is to do those things, to give us local control to the extent that we can, that we can get it. And that's a big question. But what was that, Sean?
Appropriate that our internets. Our internet just said unstable.
I wasn't sure what you were getting.
That's, that's a, that's a good way of saying it.
I just wanted to point out some of the big picture things that we started with these goals. And we've stuck, stuck to and adhered to and honored those goals. And that's led us to where we are. So I know it's not for everybody, but I can say with absolute certainty that, that we've done our due diligence. We've done our homework. We've assessed the risks. We've done our, our best to mitigate those risks and make them acceptable to the broadband committee. And I hope to. Money when things are getting tight. I know from what I'm paying for internet rate now that if this bill, or this bill, this article, Brent said bill and it's thrown me off. If this passes, I'm going to save 20 bucks a month on my internet. That's really good. It's not a lot of money, but at the end of the year it's 240 bucks. And I'm looking forward to that and looking forward to know that I can have some control over what that price looks like in the future. And that my neighbors who have poor service or don't have any service will have the exact same service I do. Those are the things I think are most important. And that's to me, the focus of this project. So that's my big picture stuff. And I'll, I'll ask anybody else that wants to comment.
I mean, I, I, I have nothing else to add. I, I think it Reed Field, I think it has been worked on diligently. I think if you look and pay attention to any of the news, this is, this it's a no brainer and especially local control. With all due respect, I don't want Elon Musk Reed Field internet. And, and I, I think that when you look at the equity that goes all the way across, it's.
So I have a couple of comments that I'll try to express intelligently. If people are concerned about cost and we're looking at what we expect to be a $20 per month cost to the tax base on an average priced property with a building on it. That's $20 fixed for 20 years per month. There is no other internet service that is going, and that would be approximately a third of the cost of your internet service. There's no other internet company out there who can promise you a fixed rate for any amount of their bill, no less up to a third. So even with inflation going up now and the cost of a bond in November for a municipal bond from the main municipal bond bank will probably be at the high rate Eric had estimated in the proposal, even though that's full percentage point higher than it was when we were looking at this. He said, no, things might just be a little more expensive. And so that's already in the proposal is that increased rate. So it, it truly is cost saving. You can see that Fidium, which is really just consolidated communications, they're just rebranding is putting in high speed fiber optic cable all throughout Manchester. That was part of their proposal that came through from coming up the state, they said, but they're not coming out to any rural towns. They're not going to. They have no plans to in the future. They're not doing it now. And then they're still in control of the pricing afterwards, which would probably be a great thing for Reed Field if they were coming here, but they are not coming here. That is a known. Satellite communication, everything you do that's wireless is not secure. That's just the bottom line. And so have a internet system for a town where people want to purchase a product. I would assume that most people would like something that's secure and safe and can't be blown. Own up by another country who wants to take down the satellite sign for places that can't get internet, like in the middle of desert, not run physically, they just can't happen. Here we can run cables and it is the future. There are, I'm not going to go on forever, but, um, you know, there was a time when people said, we don't need electricity. What will we ever do with all that electricity? All I need are a couple of light bulbs. And then there was the refrigerator and then there was the heating system. And later on, there was the television. And if you look at how cell phones came about, people were like, oh, I'll never need a cell phone. When we had bag of phones that sat in your car. And you know, now our cell phones are computers with TV screens. Recreation for just general communication, for photography, for all kinds of things. So the world is going to keep developing those things and people in Reed Field are going to want them. It's a great boost to our tax base. This is a wonderful thing to have in your property value. My home in Reed Field has great internet is something you can say if you want to sell it or you want to rent it. So these are all great things. And if those are not things that people agree with, then I assume that they will vote no. So these are all great things. And if those are not things that people agree with, then I assume that they will vote no. And if they are things that people agree with, I hope that they will vote yes. I would never stand behind any project and then stand up and point out its flaws. I would hope that I would have researched that and we've gotten past the flaws. So I disagree with holding the materials and not printing them because we haven't pointed out things. And I guess I would just like to ask Eric if you could talk briefly, there is a website out there that's heavily promoting against our project.
Yes. So, and that's just the start. I fully expect that we are going to see a lot of pushback from telecom and telecom lobbying groups. The code officer came in this morning and said, what did you guys do to piss these guys off? And I mean, he was joking, but he's not wrong. They are spending a lot of money on advertising that is very- Even some canvassing. But right now they're focusing on online media, Facebook, Twitter, things like that. And I just ask our residents to be thoughtful and be careful because what's being presented is very, very misleading. And I will say that if you have any interest in learning the facts, visit reedfieldfiber.org. And we have a lot of information there about this proposal. And like I said, not everybody's going to agree with this, what we're trying to do, residents, but certainly not the large businesses that stand to gain the most from us failing. So.
And just to follow up and sorry, I'll get right out of here, but we're not alone in this. Fayette, Wayne, Leeds, Bienna, Mount Vernon, Reed Field are all proposing to do the same thing. This is not something that Reed Field has come up with out of the blue that is wildly different from what other communities are doing. We're a group of six towns who have worked together. This marketing campaign by the big groups was tried in Leeds and the Leeds voters rose up and said, no, you're not going to come in and control us. We know what's best for our town and that's what we're going to vote for and that's what they did. So there's a lot to this. It's not $5 million in one year. It's $5 million over 20 years.
Which is less than we spend on capital improvements for roads, less than we spend on education. They make it look like it's a huge expense and it's worse than else, but it's not even close to that.
I mean, we spend $3 million a year on schools just for Reed Field share, correct? Is it?
Yeah, just a three point something five.
And so in 20 years, that would be $60 million we spend in education and we're asking for $5 million for broadband. And I'm not saying that education isn't important or that it's too expensive, just the contrary. It's just that these are big numbers and we just, that's what we deal with when you're on a town level, not in a household level. So Sean, thank you for letting me speak again.
Yeah, I just, I was just very surprised to see the level of campaigning against such as what I thought was a small town that wouldn't have as big an impact on a company, but obviously 20 years worth of service money is worth them spending money now. That they realize they're going to lose if we vote for this. So yeah, it's, it was, I found it very interesting and hopefully people go to the website and read all the great information that's there. Use the calculator to see what it's going to cost them. You know, there's a great, that tool in there is really good to see what is this going to look like for me.
Reedfieldfiber.org.
Reedfieldfiber.org. Yes.
Carol, anything?
Well, thank you both very much. And I just want to say thanks to the committee members. Thank you very much for all of your work. It has been tireless. There has been an enormous amount of information that has flowed out of this committee. And so I just want to say thanks to Catherine. I'm glad you're on our side.
Well, thanks for pointing me. Could have been one of you.
I think there was something said about this type of fiber optic is going to be obsolete shortly. And that seems to be not the case whatsoever. In other words, just like somebody was putting out some false information and that-
That's right.
The best we have for the foreseeable future.
Nothing travels faster than the speed of light. I mean, I say that in all seriousness.
Like it's well put.
The, the, the radio technology that's out there, all the wireless technology that's out there, it travels at a speed close to the speed of light, but not at the speed of light. It also travels through things like trees and houses and hills. And so it inherently will always have, always more latency and more interference, no matter what than the fiber optics. The controllers that are part of the system and the computers might need to be replaced periodically, but we've of running the network. And so even if things do get, you know, out of date after a while, I mean, I don't know many people-
floated in Tonga back on January 15th, just four months and a day ago. It severed their fiber optic cable through the ocean, which is how they have all of their communications in their country. And they have that because that is the best thing for this group of islands out in the middle of an ocean. It's how the transatlantic cable is now. It's all fiber optic. And this is why we can, can do things at the speed that we do. So it is not, it has been around for many years. It hasn't been very affordable all of that time, only for very huge projects like a transatlantic cable. But that has all been changing. And now we have the opportunity to take advantage of this if the will of the voters is yes.
Great. Thank you both very much. What a great discussion, but we're not done yet. Item 22110, consider the final town warrant, meeting warrant and X without you. Who, I believe it falls on page 36 in your packet if you're looking for it.
Nation, this is the actual ballot.
Oh, you're at the actual ballot.
Because we need to sign this tonight to post it.
Exactly.
Right. Sorry.
No, no worries. I believe what I was looking at was the explanation document was on, starts on 36. But at any rate, yes, indeed. Do we, is there any particular order that we want to take these? Are there anybody who has questions from looking at this prior to tonight's meeting?
I'll just say that this is the corrected version after the meeting that the select board had last Tuesday. And so nothing has really changed. I think that nothing has changed, nothing at all, actually, since you took that vote. And so I guess I would just appreciate the board signing the the warrant. And then if you want to move on, we can talk about some of the explanations, but generally just taken care of. This is just-
Already. Yeah. It's just a, just a clamping down of the final copy.
Is this also the posting?
So what we will do is we will take this, this will be the official signature confirming everything in that warrant. Following that, we will post the legal warrant that is required under state statute. Technically that has to be done more than seven days in advance, but we obviously have absentee ballots coming out. We want to get it posted. So this will be posted along with the official notice for the upcoming public hearing on the second. Yep. All that stuff will be posted. Next meeting, you folks will be signing a return on the warrant verifying that those notices were put out legally and appropriately in the designated places in town.
Gotcha.
Do we need a motion or just?
Yes, we do.
I'd make a motion that we sign the final copy of the warrant for the June 14th town meeting for Reed Field.
Second, it's been moved in second to approve the warrant as it appears in the packet for the vote on June 14th. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Very well. Thank you very much, Eric.
Thank you for meeting for those last minute corrections.
Yes, of course. We do come to item 22119 to discuss the upcoming Heritage Day celebration in August. And I can do that very quickly. We are looking to have items happen at the fairgrounds. We will have things happening at the beach. We also have a number of different local businesses and art galleries and things like that that are happening. We always have the breakfast at the Mason's. They'll be doing that again this year. There's been talk about possibly doing a 5K on the trails that may be beginning at the high school track, running around the trails and then finishing back at the high school, which would be nice because then you wouldn't be on the road. Items like that, items, for example, a twist again. This idea of a family friendly 60s themed sock hop style 60s music dance that would happen on Friday night. And that is something that we're looking at and saying, hey, you hear, you know, twist again, you want to just start moving, bob your head. You're like, you know, you roll your cigarettes in your sleeve. But the idea is to have something that is a family friendly item on a Friday night. And that was a pretty great thing. We'll do, the fireworks are, look like we're all set for those to happen again this year on Saturday night as well as a full day Saturday. So I just want to remind everyone that our next planning meeting is Sunday, June 12th at 1:00 PM right here in this very room. And I still have leftover snacks and refreshments from yesterday when my friend Catherine Landrum, who is organizing the twist again moment showed up. But if that's possible, please join us. I know that all kinds of great folks in Reed Field making this happen. And that's it. Carol?
Can I suggest that be a run, walk?
Oh, absolutely. Listen, if I'm organizing it, it's gotta be, trust me. Absolutely. Yeah, I think it's great to do, you know, fun run. We've had, I run, I organize one for the Friends of Compton Hall in Monmouth. And we love to have, we call it a run, jog or walk. Bring your dogs, your perambulators, whatever it is you want to push up through there and have yourself a good time. That's really all we care about. I also think it's a good way to get folks who may not have been on the trails before to run those trails. Because they are so well cared for, they're so well maintained that it would be a really nice thing to sort of show them off and showcase them sort of as a little bit of a special day. We would do that at eight o'clock. It usually lasts about an hour, depending on how many people came in. We would keep the costs low because we would not get trophies or medals. What we would do is we would print T-shirts for the winners, depending on how many age groups and things like that we had. And the only other really high expense would be to try to get it chip timed, electronically timed, which is a huge benefit. But that's again, we're all talking about different items. I know the historical society will have their wine and cheese party. They're going to have some more of the dedications of the signs led by historian extraordinaire Dale Potter Clark. So there'll be all kinds of things happening. We'll have more information for you after June 12th.
Be great if they do another history walk.
Yeah, absolutely.
To that other crowd that isn't in the run, walk, jog.
Yes, yes, that's right. That's right. Excellent. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to new business. We have 30 minutes set aside for this. It's item 22125 is to consider the disposition of tax acquired property. This information about this is in your packet. Eric, do you have anything to say about this?
Yeah, it is reserved because right now we're just in a transitional period. I have been in contact with the niece of the former owner as well as the gentleman that was interested in the right of first refusal. We have also, I have scheduled for this Friday, a visit to the former owner. There are some things complicating this site. First of all, we did take a look with the conservation commission to see if there was any conservation value for the property. Their review, including represented from the Canadian Land Trust, indicated that there was nothing there that really was worth putting any kind of easement or conservation protection on. And do what you need to do with it. And so that was helpful. I did talk to Les Priest also about representing us. We haven't finalized that, that agreement yet, but we may not need to because things are getting a little There are two things that complicate this property a little bit. One is that the road, the frontage road is actually about 100 feet away from the property line. So there is some question about clear access from that line to the law in the state of Maine is that you cannot have a landlocked piece of property and usually there's a way to find- From family member to family member, I don't know the status. But these are things that we want to look at. All of this does lead to the fact that the best possible outcome would be to work with the niece if Mr. Alaborn is willing to sell the property back to him for taxes due. That original amount that we foreclosed for, that would keep, you know, him in possession of the property. He could then do what he wanted to do with his niece. And we would be made whole and there wouldn't be any transaction of the property outside of that relation. Dean, if that doesn't work out, if he doesn't want to do that, if he wants us to sell it and hand the money over to him, we can still do that. It's just a little bit more complicated. It would require a cash sale almost certainly. But that's not necessarily unreasonable for a $50,000 property. So that's the update on where things stand. We're still talking to all parties and we've done our process to date to keep everything moving and make sure that the town conservation had their first pass at it.
I think these, these moments as a select board, keep in mind that this process has been many years in the making to foreclose. I hate, you know, the idea of the town having to do that and being, the town is not in the real estate business. So I really appreciate your efforts, Eric, to make sure that we work with the family to do what's right. And that seems the most common sense approach to it. So thank you very much and I trust that we'll figure it out. If there's nothing-
Two things. One is whatever we do, any costs that we've incurred would also be included, correct? Not just the taxes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Including the cost of purchase and sale agreement, if that was required, all those things.
Okay.
Yes.
And then the other, to kind of follow up on what Dennis said is we've been very fortunate in Reed Field that our residents have been able to pay their property taxes as well as they have. We had many fewer properties this year come up on the potential foreclosure list than we've had in-
Decades probably.
Right. It was very, very small amount. So that is one indication that Reed Field is healthy in a financial sense. And I guess we just need to continue to remind people that we do have a fund in Reed Field that can help people who are having trouble with their taxes. And so, you know, please don't do things like go without food and medicine because you need to pay your taxes. You need to come and speak to the town manager and that's all completely confidential. And there can be ways that we can assist people. So.
Thank you. Anything else? Good. We moved to item 22126, 10 minutes to update and consider the updates to the town of Reed Field purchasing policy. Do you want to explain this, Eric? You want me to?
Sure. I can do it very quickly and I bet you guys can do it in less than 10 minutes. Maybe even, I guess, what it would be 25% less because all we really did here was add 25% to the previous standards for thresholds for when things would be, I guess, 25 to 50, depending on where it was. But we just had to update the cost thresholds for our purchasing policy because this is several years old and we are seeing an increase- because this is several years old and we are seeing an increase in costs. And we've had several instances recently where we've had to suspend the policy for what would be considered a pretty routine purchase. And so we'd like to streamline this process and give myself and the board a little bit more flexibility that, that represents basically the current cost of goods and services to do the same work we had done four or five years ago. And so that's all this really does. And I did update the signatures as well.
I, I would just mention that this is something that I also would, am supportive of. I, I hate the idea of having a policy, but then having to continuously vote to suspend it. So then why not make the policy better? And so this is one of the biggest parts out of this that I think, again, it's not authorizing us to spend more money. It's just simply saying that for costs up to less than $7,500, then we don't have to do any suspending. And it's, and to me, it seems like a better figure for those items.
It's been seven years. And times have changed financially in seven years, so it seems very reasonable. I would make a motion that we accept the revised purchasing policy as presented.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve the revised town of Reed Field purchase policy to indicate the changes. Any further discussion? Oh, Eric, go ahead.
One other item I wanted to point out that it's not financial, but we did remove the requirement that all of these things come in in paper form.
Yes.
Email is a very common means of communication. Also, you can send a password protected PDF. So someone could send in electronic copy and then send the passcode by a text the same day as the bid opening.
Yeah.
Things like that are entirely possible. So this is just a, I did update that so that we can accept electronic media.
It's a no brainer, yeah. All in favor? Thank you all very much. Last, we want to hear an update and consider the next steps in an ongoing effort to improve EMS service in Reed Field. I can tell you and remind you while Eric is working that we did earlier this year sign a resolution of declaration about Reed Field's intention to work with MMA and work towards helping to foster more EMS opportunities, jobs, et cetera, like that. And you can see that we did receive back this letter dated May 2nd from the Maine Municipal Association and its director Catherine Conlow to sort of acknowledge that and keep us in the loop. Eric, is there more that you would like to add?
No, just to say that we plan on putting some time into this. Marty Hennis is our community leader on this. And I think that he would like to meet with Carol and myself intermittently to help move this forward. Having MMA's attention is really, really good. And Ms. Conlow is actually former, worked in EMS previously. And so she was talking about things that I had no, no, no understanding of. And you wouldn't necessarily expect that from a director of the Maine Municipal Association, but it was a fantastic connection. And they really are interested in pursuing this and helping us and every other town in the state that's struggling to find some relief and to work through education and work with the state and do those things that they do so well to make this work.
So thank you very much to Marty and Elaine. I know that this, this, their involvement was spurred by, by an experience that, you know, we, we understand and we want to do better, I think, all the way around. And that's where it leads to in, in this support.
Yes, ma'am.
So the next page where Marty said he submitted an application for RCC, is that, it's like page 71? I don't know what RCC is that he's referring to.
Oh, so that's the Conservation Commission and that would be like, that's another business item. That's one.
Nevermind.
One, one step ahead.
Okay, I didn't know if it was one in the same. One thing in that discussion and kind of really thinking about this pragmatically and what's the word? I'll move on. We can have all the EMTs in the world, but if we only have two ambulances in Winthrop, unless we have another vehicle, we may have more bodies to respond. So that it's also, I don't know if that's absorbed by the municipal. Be unfortunate that at any one time, there could be multiple tragedies and they do have to prioritize whatever. But we, I know there are several community colleges, I think. KB, not KBCC, sorry. The one at Coney.
That's Cassie.
Cassie, thank you. It's like graduating 10 in their EMT program like this June. So relief is coming, I think the need has been identified. But then there's that other piece about having emergency vehicles, which should probably be part of the municipality budget. Just throwing that out there as the other, their side of the, of the table.
Yeah, absolutely. I think Winthrop, they, they do have three ambulances, they're just not able to staff that third one.
Gotcha, okay, well that's, okay.
And, and they may need to expand at some point, but especially if our population continues to grow as people come here and say, boy, this isn't just about getting relief from COVID, this is a nice place to be.
Yeah.
We're seeing more of that.
Okay.
Anything else on item 22127? I just want to say again, thank you very much, Ma'am. We really appreciate it.
I'd like to say that I think this is a, I think this is the right way for us to approach this is to try and improve the services that already exist. That thinking along the lines of Reed Field.
Catherine, do you have something?
I just want to ask a quick question because this reminded me. Because there was an issue during candidate's night, would it be possible that we advertise on our June 2nd meeting that there's a, a cell phone number people could call? If the internet were to go down, I don't know if it would be best to use the town manager's number, but maybe someone else could answer it if that were to happen. But I know people felt slighted. We had a candidate that was trying to come in online and couldn't participate, so.
Yeah, no, we, we can do that and we, we, we could, I'll, I'll try to get out the, the email for the email, the phone number for one of the lines downstairs that could be forwarded to any cell phone. So we can do a standard telephone number. So I will work on that in promotion and we will mention it at the start of the, at the start of the meeting.
Great.
That'd be great.
Thank you, thank you Catherine.
Good point.
Sorry, I know you've had things.
No, that's okay.
Other business, Eric, we have?
Yes, so Carol had pointed out that Marty had asked about his appointment. That actually, with Kristen being out last week, I wasn't able to answer that question. So I just wanted to make sure we weren't missing something. He is one of about 25 people that have already responded and say, yes, I would like to be reappointed for July 1st. So we typically do not make those appointments until the meeting in June. Might not be incumbents to say, yeah, I'm interested in that. And it's not just a automatic reappointment for folks that have held the position. So it is intended to be, and I've responded to Marty to that effect. It's intended to, to give some opportunity for other people that might be interested. So this is a non-issue and has been addressed. The other item that I hope someone has an interest in on the select board, but if not, we can scratch it, would be potentially serving on the Legislative Policy Committee for the Maine Municipal Association. It is a really cool thing. They have about 50 to 70 people get together and talk about policy issues. Governments, some of the biggest ones that have come out recently related to tiny houses and housing policy. The revenue sharing has been a huge issue for the past, well, since it was gutted. And things like that, that affect municipalities, this is an opportunity for us to have somebody, you know, speak on our behalf and have MMA respond. And I think this ambulance thing is going to be one of those issues. But they do ask that we have an, an elected official, if possible. If not, then somebody who was appointed serve in that capacity to help shape direction for the Maine Municipal Association in dealing with legislative issues.
Would, would it be possible for me to request that we hear this now and figure out someone later? Does that sound like a deal to everyone? I feel like not, we're, we're all overextended. And, and if we, if we can marinate on it a little bit, I think it might be more helpful than, than jumping into something than, than you, you feel like you, you committed it with something you can't follow through.
Sure. Well, so, so the deadline is June 22nd.
Okay.
So we do have that one meeting, the first meeting in June to take care of that. So thank you for that suggestion.
I appreciate that. I think that's, that's where everyone is.
Do you know what the time commitment is for that?
I don't exactly. I know that during the legislative session, I think they meet monthly and for an hour, hour and a half, I believe. It's not a three hour marathon type of meeting situation. They try to respect people's times. One thing I will say is that if anybody's interested, let me know and I can get more information. Also, it can be an appointed person. So if there's somebody in town that is on a board or committee, we could potentially, excuse me, recommend them for this as well.
If we were all busy, I'd be very willing to nominate Ralph.
No, 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 absolutely not. If he wanted to, yeah, but not with him in absentia. All right, I thought you were going to pick on him and say like, let's do Ralph now. That's right, yeah, see, Sean's ready, you're already drawing a bit. Eric Vassmeyer, what more for you?
Not a, I make a motion to adjourn.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor? Thank you very much.